I just started recording. Okay, so today is June fifth, twenty twenty four. This is the meeting of the Board of Election Supervisors. It's approximately three oh five P M. I'm just gonna call it to order. I'm your clerk for today. Chair Williams. I believe your present is your own either. Hi.
Hi, I'm present.
Okay. Ms. Sanders?
Present.
Ms. Lundey?
Present.
Okay, and right now we don't have Ms. Sojourner on on the line, online, but we will, you know, we will let, she'll, we'll let her in as soon as she comes in. We're doing a hybrid. Ms. Lundey came by the office, so we just put it in our normal in our normal thing. In our normal room, and this is a new technology that we can use so that we all sit at the same table and use one particular connection. Ray's here. And as well, so I'll just note that for the record. I sent a copy of the draft candidate handbook that we sort of adopted from College Park. There are some parts that I will take to our town attorney for her to change things to our particular codes. Those are why they're highlighted in yellow. But we wanted to check in on, and I believe that when Rich was here, he started to adopt this to ours. So the first pages that are not are from our from our handbook. So that's why the first pages, Rich had already started this before he left, to try to put this into place. With the running for office section, the amount for for the council members, the different procedures, and then information, we'll have a copy of the applicant filing, the election rules and regulations, et cetera, et cetera. So up until you get to where you see the heavily yellow, I think that which is already kind of gone through and put it, had gone through before he left and put into this so that we could start moving forward on a candidate application. And the reason why I wanted to bring this to the group was because, because in the last election, there were issues regarding the timing of some of these things. And then also, when the clerk brought you information, so I also attached the timeline from twenty twenty three that had Mr. Tranovich's timeline of when he brought you things. I started to develop a new timeline based on for twenty twenty five, which I'll share with you at our next meeting. But kind of takes that and makes it gets all those dates out there for you now so that you can see what will election day be, what would all these kind of dates be for twenty twenty five, given the way that we've done in the past. But I think the issue that really we probably also want to concentrate is how candidates were certified and the delay, the some of the delays in certification that occurred last time so that we can do them upfront. And you have plenty of time. I just think that what happened is that Mr. Tranovich brought all of them to you at one time instead of bringing them to you as he got them, which he can do. He doesn't have to bring all candidates at one time. So you can bring candidates as they, if they've got a complete application and we think they're complete, the board can review those review those applications. And that would be a policy issue that you all would say, we want to see them when they're complete. And then we're, and that we build in time in the process that the Board of Election Supervisors is actually looking at applications prior to the final due date, because a lot of people turn it in. So those are the, those are the issues that I just wanted to bring up that that kind of surround this discussion today. We'll probably have a second meeting on this particular handbook. So this is kind of like your first look at it. And so that you can make comments and then we can come back and kind of clean it up more. If that makes sense.
I have some comment.
I'm, I'm open.
Well, first of all, this is very good. Thank you so much. So I had on page four. And I have a note here, C number C. I just want to make sure that they're not in conflict with each other because here in A, it says, any person having a qualification may become a candidate for mayor or council member by filing with the town clerk or the Board of Supervising Elections. But in C, it just referenced the town clerk. So is there explanation for that?
I think it's from the standpoint, this is some of the stuff from the way that College Park does it. We've always ended with a town clerk, so I would say that should stay consistent that it would be filing with the town clerk, who then will bring it to the Board of Elections. So that an A is incorrect. And then we will make that. But I think part of your remember we're doing some of these internal procedures is that you would like that to occur that way, that as you get them, the town clerk will bring them to you and that you're anticipating meetings during and before that election cycle. So your number of meetings would probably increase and that we need to set those up in advance.
And I'd like, like your explanation, if you can include that.
Yeah.
What, you know, presented, you know, send it to the town clerk for the Board of and then, and then that bold under there where it says a note about the deadline. The last part, for this reason, we encourage you to submit your forms early or by the prescribed due date. I would like to add that language. It's just, that's it. This is just me going through it. And then on page six. Under section, the first one, under section three, da, 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 da. The town chartered a mayor council point of Board of Supervisors Elections to oversee the town elections. The first bullet, to provide all registered voters accessible locations in which they are, which they may exercise their right to vote. Is it possible to list those out? I know we were working, you were working on trying to find where those are going to be, the additional site locations. We had made suggestions during our, one of our meetings, what's impossible, other locations for voters to vote.
I think the issue that we've got with ours is that this is, this is again, this is a portion that he did not revise from College Park because they have seven districts. And because we have the two utilizing, let's say, a school, for example.
Or the community center.
Or the community center. The community center is like heavily used for classes.
Okay.
Then they're being able to allow us to use a room for a certain number of days. I just think our turnout, I mean, I think it may hurt our turnout, but our turnout, I don't think is large enough.
Okay.
To probably say a secondary site, but the secondary site was to go back to that, that was in regards to having a drop off point. For, so I think that we would, we are trying to pursue getting a Dropbox at the community center. So there is a Dropbox in there too.
Okay.
Because we did get quite a few written, you know, about.
Right. Cause they're literally held at Ward one.
Right.
Correct. That makes sense.
So that was, that's, so, but we can, we can also update this in here as well. Thank you.
Okay. And you already explained about the yellow, which was going to be a question. Okay, so on page fifteen. State reporting requirements. Are candidates penalized for not meeting this deadline? Will they be penalized? For not meeting that deadline? And, and I would like to see that deadline also added to the table. That's on page sixteen.
That's what I want to check in with. That's why it's legal, we have a yellow, because that's the issue that College Park has this in their code. I don't know if we have this in our code.
Okay.
But I'll ask her, this is why we can ask.
Right. Cause we had found out, is this a law? Yep. On page seventeen. At the top. The designated electioneering zones, you kind of know what I'm going to ask. Those going to be made available locations to the candidates, so they can know where they are.
Yeah, I think if on the, I thought we put it on the next page, didn't we? It thought it should be in here, but I can have Sean to to outline.
It says contact the code enforcement person. But it would be nice to know where they are. I don't even know where they are.
Okay.
Okay, does this contribute to A C? Political size. Oh, and then letter B under placement number one. On town right of ways. I'm not sure if candidates, you may have somebody who's never lived here or whatever, and they just want to run for office. They may not know what in, how, what defines a right of ways.
Okay. And I also need to check on that one too, because I think that's, I don't know if we developed it from the from the, the College Park one.
Okay.
So I'll ask about that and which ones are. I, I know that probably.
I'm almost finished.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of where our town areas are, so.
That'll be, that'll be good. So people can know. It's education too. Okay, on page twenty one. Number four, number, where can I, there's an election, oh, I already talked about that, number three, cause you're gonna find out. Number four, I would like to list of absentee ballot requesters. Perhaps in lieu of a list, maybe the number of absentee ballots received. Cause I see the comment here, and then I see the next comment about we don't give them or something. So given our history of elections over the last few election cycles here in the town, what, what would be the number?
So that, would you like me to have that, that as an FAQ, is how I request the number? Because this is more.
Instead of the list of the people's names.
Well, I think the reason why they do this is because since they don't do it, a list may not be made to ensure secrecy of voter. I think the reason why they have it as an FAQ to say they don't is because they do provide a list, but they don't require, because I think they've gotten this question before, like, tell me who voted or tell me who requested. And I think the reason why the FAQ is here saying we don't do it because that's against, that's not, you know, that's not further secrecy. So I think you're right. And then what we could add to our thing is that we will release the number of absence, that we can release a, a number of, number of requests. So we can add that, we can add. Yeah, I mean, hopefully that though we keep them right in the date, like we, we should be keeping an Excel, an Excel file that has the names and the dates. But I would say that we can provide a list of the number that were requested. I would say.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
And the town can provide.
And it's important to know when we receive them, because we want to make sure we see them in a timely manner, the ones received after, and the ones received in time.
The number of requests. And whether they came in before or after the date deadline, they came in. Does this make sense?
Yeah, I know we do it at the county. Okay, so number eight. So I just want to understand, can you elaborate on this statement? It's the last part of a level playing field. Among all kinds, certain privileges afforded to a council member, I'm thinking that's a seated council member and mayor are not afforded to any elected official who is a candidate. So is that clear?
Yeah, this is theirs.
Oh, it's in yellow too.
Yeah, this is in yellow. I don't think that I would use this one at all. I'm actually saying that this is an FAQ that I wouldn't do because I couldn't say that I'll treat my council members differently than I would treat you. And that's not, but that's, that was the that was College Park.
Right.
That's College Park language. I'm suggesting probably, at least when I tell a yellow, I'm like, probably not.
Okay, I like that.
But I do like the fact that they say a incumbent may not use meeting space at the town building. Yeah, in town ethic.
I have a comment to add to that too. So incumbent candidate may not use meeting space at town. I would also like to add, because we own or business owned by the town. I don't think, I think that's a conflict because you got people that seated council members and mayor, and we own space in the town. So I don't think that those incumbents should be allowed to hold race, you know, people should be allowed to hold, you know, campaign things, there's, you know, fundraisers, stuff like that. So I mean, you can think about, I don't know, the other committee can make some.
No, I think that's what, I mean, I think you guys, this is, you're making those recommendations of what this should say.
Yeah, that's my recommendation, that's my thought.
And put, or put our other buildings owned by the town.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or space rented.
Or, yep. Number nine. Okay, okay. Level playing field. Should candidates be required to let the town clerk or Board of Elections know their start date so we can ensure integrity of the campaign finance reports? Because we are saying here, if they start prior to submitting their paperwork, they must report this. So how can we ensure the level of integrity that they're doing it if we don't know, you know, by the time I see a sign, I don't know, it might be after, because I don't know, you know what I'm saying?
So I think the issue was is that we, what, and this is what I'm checking in with our attorney on, is that a lot of people said they couldn't, because they didn't, they weren't notified by the board that they were candidates, they couldn't campaign, and other people campaigned. There's nothing in the law, which is what, from the attorney when she talked to you guys, that said they couldn't campaign beforehand.
Correct.
College Park puts this a little caveat about contributions received. I think we probably, if you ask me, we probably should stay away from it.
Really?
Because I don't think it's, I mean, it's again, it's one more thing for, needed for us to check and not everybody, well, somebody will say, I just walked around with pamphlets that I, that I printed off for my printer at home. And they might not have spent any money. Do you understand? Like they'll, somebody will probably, I mean, I think the tendency is somebody probably could tell you, I am just walking around with these pamphlets I already had. Like, and one particular candidate, I think, probably did do that, just walked around and talked to people, right?
And, and when I think about it now, it's like, what difference would it really make if they can do it anyway, prior to submitting their form?
That's the issue.
So I can remove that off the table.
Yeah, I, I think that, I mean, that's where I'm thinking, but I need your feedback on it. But that's where, that was the issue that the attorney did say, was that that was a that we, that there wasn't a prohibition. Now, if they, if you guys want a prohibition to say the board will look at your information timely, you send in your information timely, and do not campaign until you've been approved.
Yeah.
Then that could be, that's your policy decision to say nobody campaigns until you're approved, but if you turn your information quickly, you can get out there and get a jump on everybody because we would have approved you as a candidate.
My only reason we're bringing this up is because you're, you're leaving it to, to them to be, have integrity, to say, please report all of that. Because that's supposed to be a part of their campaign finance report, but we really wouldn't know because we're not asking for anything from them with the date that they actually started to begin their campaign prior to submitting their campaign finance reports. You see my issue?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah.
So that's something maybe we could talk with the board.
Yeah, I think the board needs to give us, to give, to give, you know, staff some input on how do you want to receive them? How do you want to receive the applications? What do you want to, you know, when you receive the applications, how do you want to do that?
Is there, I can't remember the application. Is there, can we add a line that says, well, we know they still have, still leaving it to them to be accountable. I don't know if there's something on this, if this is here, if since we're allowing them to campaign early, do we have something on that form that adds for a date if they did that, or just in general?
This is just a draft FAQ. We're not allowing them to campaign early.
Okay.
This is something that you need to decide.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not making, this is College Parks.
Okay. Not in yellow.
That was not in yellow because it's not necessarily a legal issue.
Okay.
It's a policy issue.
Policy, okay.
So you're making the policy decision to say whether or not you want to allow people to campaign. I think the issue that came up last election was that people had all their information submitted. There really was nothing wrong with their application. We delayed in reviewing it. So they were not, they lost campaigning time when one person who understood that they didn't necessarily need to do that was out there campaigning.
Correct.
So, and it's not, to be honest with you, not, I don't think it's more about the money. It's about, how are you going to treat people who just walk around? Because I think the issue was is that a person was walking around, talking to people about vote for me.
And also in my own community, I saw signage prior to the due date for the campaign stuff to be submitted.
Right.
So they started campaigning early, and they probably also were walking around, because I saw a sign that's posted, right, posted. So my thing is, I just want to know when they started.
Okay, so that's what you, so, so.
So how did the other people feel?
Yeah, I think that's the question, is that how do you guys feel about that? How do you feel about the whole process of campaigning?
I think they should be allowed to campaign after they have submitted their paperwork. If they have not completed it in totality, then they should not be putting out posters and flyers and stuff like that. That's just my, my opinion.
So Chair, so basically, until the board approves them, they should not be able to campaign. That's, that's where it is. So if they have a submitted application, the board must approve them. And we won't be, I guess the question, other policy question is, is that do we hold all applications until the, the very last day? So that everybody's on one slate, because that's the way Rich understood from the stand, from reading it, was that he should do that. I know that other municipalities don't do that. They review as they come in, and the board meets, and they make a decision. Actually, in College Park, a lady meets with the chair, and the chair does the approval process. But that's my question, is that what process do you guys want? Do you want to review all of them at the same time with all of the information, which means nobody can start campaigning until the very last day that applications are due? Or do you want to have some kind of hybrid?
Well, I think that once all the applications are in, if they're in by the time that, of the due date. If everything, all paperwork is in order, I think after that, and it's in prior to the date, the due date, then they can go ahead and campaign after that.
So are you saying that the board would meet? Let's say I have two applications that are in, complete, staff has looked at them, we think they're complete. Do you want me to call a meeting for the two applications? Because they're in us prior to the due date, and then you would make a determination, say, yes, these are complete, and then we certify them as candidates before the final due date? Or are you saying that it's July twenty sixth or whatever, whatever the due date is? Here's all ten applications, here are all paperwork, and you have one meeting?
Okay, I think that would simplify things instead of piecemealing it.
Yeah.
That makes more sense to me.
Yeah. Cause we also, we can always date stamp them when we receive whatever.
Yeah, they're, they're always date stamped. I think the issue that we had last time was that we held them.
Correct.
And that people were out, there were people that were out there campaigning before the, before the time. And there was really nothing in the law from my understanding with talking to our attorney, which I will get, I will have her, once we make this decision, to review, is that that, that really bars them from campaigning without being an approved candidate. Because people sometimes campaign, have events like in other, for other offices, and they're not candidates yet. They're just exploring. But there's talking about being a candidate for, that's for something. And so what's the line between that? Do you see what I'm saying? That there are people that go, are exploring, running for office for other higher offices, but let's just say you want to put that in a Blainsburg context. They are out talking to people about it. And somebody will say, well, they campaigned to me because they told me they were going to run for Ward, Ward, Ward one or Ward two seat.
Or mayor.
Yeah, and mayor.
Right.
And, and in some ways, if the, and I'm, and I'm, and I guess the other part of the portion about is that you may give an incumbent and a undue, an undue advantage because they're already ready to run, they'll turn in their stuff, but they're already out there and they'll know, yeah, my intent is probably was to run again. And they can say, yeah, they intend to, but then they're not necessarily campaigning. They may not put out one sign, but they could say they're intending to run again. And you can, so that is, that is a real possibility. So I'm just mentioning it as a, aside, I don't have any problems with the, with you guys with doing one meeting where everybody looks at everything, but I'll just tell you, the issue last time was that came up and everybody was confused by it. But I think in the FAQs to say, no campaigning until it's approved, and it's all going to be approved at this meeting. So formal campaigning and signage does not go up until after this date.
I have a suggestion, or maybe this is a question. If we do that so that they're not campaigning, can we put that in the letter to the to the applicant or the candidate? Can we, is that possible?
Yeah, that's what we're gonna put.
That way they will know, sort of like in bold letters, you know, please do not campaign until you have been notified, you know, that you approved or we have approved or something to that nature.
And we have to also, Chair, possibly define in that letter, what does it mean to formally campaign? Because we have to set the ground rules, the parameters, if you will.
Yes. Yes. That's right.
Ms. Sanders, you have any thoughts about it?
Yeah, I was just gonna, not specifically, just one thing around page four. It says at the bottom, petitions and other required forms turned in on the last day may not be reviewed in time. I would just say will not because the likelihood of it being reviewed if they're turning it in that day, just meaning what you're saying is, is if you turn it in and it's wrong, you're not going to have any time to correct it. So just letting them upfront, instead of saying may not, because then it gets into, well, they had the time and they could have told me. It's easier to just say will not.
Yeah. I think I might have to say may, because of the law, because then I think I may get sued. I may get sued because we're supposed to make the time. But I think what we do, which happens if you're late and you like, you fail one of the things, that's, that's rejected. Do you understand? So it's like, right, it would just be rejected. Like, there's no trying to work on verifying your information because you turned it in after this time and we were unable to verify it. Like, I think there's stuff that Rich had, did to try to work with people, where he had to work through all these things. And it's the fact that you're, it should be complete and all things must be verified. So what I can do is I can check in with legal on that things are verified and completed. And as you were saying, where that step is there, because I think you're right. It's kind of like, that's the will not, is that if your stuff's not together and it's not, you know, it's not easily verified on the last day, and we can't even bring it in in the morning, or we could call the Board of Elections to check in if you have all these, you know, the little, all the facets, then that's, that's on you.
Yeah, so maybe saying it, if they're not complete. You know, it won't be accepted, or however, just letting people know that it's not like a matter of you don't want to hand it in and just say, well, they're going to correct it if it's wrong, and I'll be okay. So letting them, like, no, it won't be. And then the other question, and I think you kind of addressed this a little bit, I feel more comfortable, is the whole piece around the certification process, just knowing what that process is, so we're just all on the same page, because that did come up.
Okay.
The certification process. And that's something that we can definitely talk about when the time comes. But to just have a really clear, consistent process for it, so we're not just flipping through it, asking different questions.
I think you're right. I think what we'll do is then, as part of the next one, next meeting, which I'll probably see today, when some dates will work, and I'll probably make it pretty shortly within the next couple of weeks, is that we'll go through the certification process, because I, I brought this first, and in some ways, if you see the documents. And so we'll, we'll provide copies of all the applications again to everybody. I know I promised printed copies, and I'm sorry, we had some people here this week doing a, a review for the American Bloom. And last night, we were, I was out doing some, I was out around town, doing a couple of different things. So this meeting kind of got lost, but I wanted to have it early, because I thought we might need the second one in June, because I want to put together draft information this summer, so that we can have the council to review it about the latest by September, because what, what they want to do is they want to be out of kind of out of the timeline of the election cycle themselves for them to fairly look at the decision. Because the closer it gets to October of twenty twenty five, the more it's going to be, you know, politicized. So we want to bring them as many drafts as possible early. And so that's why I probably will then bring you guys the certification survey. What we probably need to do is the certification process and the applications. And we can put those together as drafts for you to look at. This is more of the, goes out to candidates as an information manual that says, here's some things to think about. Now, with the whole issue, since now we got something, so we got something clear on the campaigning issue, we can put an FAQ to say, you know, formal campaigning with signage is not allowed. You know, I can't, don't think we can stop people from saying to people, I'm running for office. I, I just feel like that's just, gets to the where the petty, it's going to get petty, and I'll get, I'll get everybody reporting on everybody.
Right.
So I just, I feel like that's probably, but I will let you guys determine that language, and I'll, I'll give that to you to rewrite to, but I'm just thinking, that's something that you may want to think about, because if we're not going to look at all the applications till the last day, I just know that that has been problematic. Um, I just know that that has been problematic. Um, for, and other clerks are recommending that we don't do that. Um, that we do it intermittently, uh, because they've had issues with. Exactly what you're saying, as I was saying, that there's somebody who turns it in. And the last day and we're holding it and then we've held everybody else's. And we don't, don't make a decision on the candidates. And then also the way that the deadline works. The way it's, uh, that listing that, that I sent to you, that from Mr. Charanovich. Unless we go back, unless we backdate and kind of give ourselves more than forty five days, we don't really build on a cushion. So I can make the cushion, I can build in a couple of days between the due date. And the forty five days to the election, which he didn't build in this time, I'm thinking about moving back a couple of days, like a week. And making, putting out the applications earlier and giving you a, a week in between. But still, I don't know that, when it comes to that timing, it gets really tight because it's the summer. And we don't have a lot of staff and it's just the middle of summer, it's after, that's used, that, what, last year it happened. In, um, June, July, I mean, July, August, and that was right after we finished the. Um, big Fourth of July event and we have all these different events that are going on. So I know that that's a really busy time. So I just. I know that that's one of those things that gets, that gets lost in the sauce. So. I'm just trying to say from a staff standpoint, we don't have a lot of staff. I don't think it will be much better, even when we have the town clerk. In place, that they're not gonna have a lot of time during that time, because they have a lot of demands. So this is an important demand, not saying that. But this is gonna be, it's gonna be really important to get it right.
And, um, Ms. Saunders, you're okay? I have another comment. You're good, okay. Uh, so also on, um, the twenty twenty three town election timeline. Do we need to add review campaign finance reports, include due dates? Cause I don't see that on this timeline.
This is what he did.
Oh, but you're gonna add that?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I'm gonna add, that's all the things he did. He gave me a timeline of what he did. So that's what, so yeah, that is part of it. And I think that's actually addressed in here. In some of the pages and it's not the same for us, but I wanna make sure that we create a page, I think it's called page. Page sixteen. These are critical dates. But we can put when we will look at all of ours. So something similar to this.
Yep, the chart. And then my last comment is, I guess I can leave that for, um, Ms. Saunders. I know in one of our meetings, we talked about, um. The, um, absentee ballots, mail-in ballot, the form, the envelopes or something. I guess that'd be talked about at a different meeting and also the ballot boxes. Some things that we needed to purchase. So I guess that'll be in another meeting, you give us update on those things.
I, yeah. From the meeting, so this is really good, so for the, so let's go through that, because the, with the ballot boxes and the envelopes. Uh, the new envelope type, what we're going to do is we're going to, um. We're gonna make the purchase of the ballot boxes and fiscal twenty five this coming fiscal year. So we will buy. At least two ballot boxes of fiscal year twenty twenty five. Um, and they'll be the ones that we saw, but I can bring that to you guys again, the ones that you saw that are the smaller. Metal boxes that can be drilled in, um, at least two, maybe three, because we might do one. Let's say at the library and one here. The only reason, the only thing about the library is that even though it's used by a lot of Blainsburg residents, it's also used by a lot of. Other people and I'm afraid of debris and stuff going in there versus it being ballots.
Yeah, and, and if I could ask, um, I know one voter had mentioned to me that they had. Dropped off a ballot and they had given it to a staff person or, uh, or a Board of Elections member. And I would just like whomever's receiving it to encourage voters to use the ballot box. That do not give them to a person put in their hand because we don't know if they're doing the right thing or not, we assume. But to keep integrity and everything, hope is static, let's just, inside, we're not gonna receive anything in the hand.
That's what part of your, um, receiving, the, the, the two things that we looked at last time was the fact that. There's a receiving log and that ballots will be. Put in ballot boxes. They're not going to be, they're not gonna be sent. The only reason why they will be put in. As if they're mailed still. And that they can then, those, but what they'll be done, what will be done at town halls, that they'll be stored in the ballot box.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so we will make sure that they're stored in the ballot box. But what, what College Park has is, and that, that they're still, once they're, sorry, they're stored in. It ends at, they're, they're received from the ballot box and then they're moved to a locked cabinet. And that's still, so everything will go in that locked cabinet. I think this year, what we did is we put them in those. The clear ballot boxes, we're gonna get rid of those. We'll just get a, uh, we're gonna get a locked cabinet and we will put all ballots in the locked cabinet. And we'll just put them in there so that you have them in lock him, because that's, that just makes it easier. And then we'll pull out all of them, but they'll be dated, banded, just like that, that's what that policy had, they're ba, banded, dated, counted, banded, dated, counted.
But when that happens, um. Is, is that gonna be done with a, a member of the Board of Supervisor of Election present with a staff member? How is that?
So the staff member has to sign off on that form, like that we showed you before, the staff member would take, the, the. Volunteer staff member or election person would, would, would sign, would take it and sign off and put that, that form with the ones as they go in. So they would be verifying the number, putting the date, the time and where they were selected from. And that report would go together, so they would go and do it all of this stuff. So mail. Um, locations and things like that. So each one of those forms would be filled out, the person would sign off saying there are three. That's wrapped up, put in the thing. So then Board of Elections, when they get them the day of, they'll have, probably have several banded. Sets of envelopes that have those, those reports on them. So that would be the check. And then Board of Elections would say, yes. Then when you're doing your canvassing over that portion, then you would open up each one and you say, okay, and you put to the side. This one was this date, this one was that date. And that's how, that was what that process was, that, that.
Right, I'm just asking because I know also last time there was an issue of quality assurance, quality control. And so we wanna make sure that there's no doubt that things were not done correctly or fair.
I think the, yeah, I think that the, I think the form, I'm sorry, as I knock this over, the form will. Add that extra level of this person received it, this, these are this number of votes and that it's banded together. It's still a heavy paper intensive process, right? But it also then has that level of accountability, so that when the Board of Elections opens them all up. They can then open them all up and they can take a look at it. Um, instead of doing Ward one and Ward two, they're just gonna be. Cause now we have the mayor of Ward one and Ward two. So there's gonna be a general, everybody's gonna be able to use the same ballot this time.
Okay, and I just wanted to ask, do, I don't think the town, I don't know, Ms. Pat probably would know, if we've ever done a swearing in of canvassers. Or people who handled all this election stuff, so we could make sure people understand the ethics concerned with this. So I would like to see something like that done, where we all sworn in together.
I'd like to answer the question, or just to say. As far as I know, no one has ever been sworn in. Not even when I first started, we were not. We were never sworn in.
Thank you.
So maybe the thing about it is that we can look at where other towns or other municipalities or size have done swearing ins. If that's, uh, possible, because I think, I, I get what you're saying, I mean, um, from the. Standpoint of the, um.
Integrity of the process.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that having staff. We know having reliable staff to do this, like, we are not going to have, let's see, our public works guys go out and pick up the.
And us too, we would be sworn in as canvassers.
I, what I'm saying is that there's going to be specific people that are assigned to this. And that they'll be signing their name to, to the, to these forms. And I think that's where, I mean, I think a part of this process is that. We're developing all these policies, we're gonna bring them to the council, you guys, the input of this board is really important. Um, but at the same time, what we'll also do is that the council can swear, can say, and I can say, we can put in there, the notes that. You know, is there a need to swear in? You know, canvassers, is there a need to also swear in the board itself? And have them abo, abo, involved in that process. I think the only issue is that. Having the Board of Election Supervisors to go each time to the site with the people. You know, during the weeks or two weeks, like, how long do you want the, the ballots to sit in a box? You know what I'm saying? Like if we, like if we had once a week or twice a week during that election period. I think that's, that would be, that would be okay if we had canvassers, but if you want them checked every day.
No, we can set those part.
But I'm saying, right now, we don't have it specific, and I didn't do that specifically because I think if you put down that we'll check them every day. And we don't, then you become, then we become liable saying that they, we check them every day. Um, but as close as it comes to the election, if there are, if there are members that are available. That's, that, that is, that, then we can have that happen. Just other towns have used, College Park, which is pretty large. They use a staff mem, they use a staff member that works as like a mailroom clerk. And they, you know, they have to, they have to pick up confidential stuff all the time. And I think that's, I don't think that's, you know, I don't think that's an out, out, an outlier.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm just putting it out there, um, I know with everything that's going on and the issue we had last time. I think that the, the residents, voters, whatever, would, wouldn't mind seeing that done because it speaks to the integrity and the seriousness that we're all taking this. And we can set the presidents, we don't have to really look at another town, it's something that we can set here at the Blainsburg and we could be the trailblazers for that. So, but I just wanted to put that out there. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Any other things that we have, that we would like to see for our next meeting and for things that we need to go through with this, um, on this one? I just wanna make sure that we're, um. I appreciate the comments because I understand that we wanna make sure that we have policies in place that preserve the integrity of the election. I'm just, I also just have to always look out for the fact that I have limited staff and I have limited resources. Um, so I will, I, I will always put that, I'll always be honest with where we are. Not the, not the intent that we wanna, that we want to silence or have. Or lessen the integrity of the election process, because we don't wanna do that. I, I do understand that. So if the will of the board. Is that we go a little bit above, above board of what other people are doing. I will definitely take, we will definitely bring that forward to the council and I will put in here about the swearing in of canvassers or swearing in of, um.
Yeah, the board.
For the board, I mean, I think there are probably oaths that the board can take that make, that make a lot of sense. I'll put down something for sample oath, if that makes sense, and look and see what people have for sample oath.
You can, you can look at the county.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think of the county and see if they do have for sample oath and we'll just put that. And then we can put that for the town of Blainsburg and give that to the council and put that as part of the packet. Ms. Saunders, anything else? Uh, Chair Williams?
Nothing for me.
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, so, um. Just so that I make sure that I'm, I'm gonna do a quick summary of what I've heard. So what I've heard is that, um, and I'm gonna go back through some of these items page by page. Um, starting from the beginning and we've gotten some, um. We will go through these again, make sure that what is, that, that the town, that this all is in, um. So, so on page three, with the general qualifications and everything in the form of government. But these are all things that apply to the town of Blainsburg. On page four, under, under A, um. Any persons having qualifications become a candidate but council member by filing with the town clerk. Um, who will then in turn turn that into the Board of Supervisors for approval. That's the, that's the, that's what I hear as the change of that language. Um, and that, that'll be part of your policy. And number C, in letter C, um, that there's a suggestion to submit early. Or before the deadline to ensure, and then council, I mean, then, um. Ms. Saunders, when you were mentioning the fact that, you know, that this ability for us to be able to, um. Make sure that, that they're, that they know that we will not, or may, instead of may, shall, whatever. Yeah, that we can try to clear up that language with, um, the town attorney. Um, the certification process, again, I have a note on that for page five to make sure that certification process is clear. Um, and that's just a general note. Um, on page six, under Board of Supervisors, that first section. Um, to provide registered voters with accessible locations, I'm taking out the word accessible locations. Because we may not be able to secure a secondary location, um, based on the size of the town. But we will provide a drop off point in Ward two, one and Ward two. So the goal is to get. A drop off place at the, um, at, at either the, the, um, the. The community center or maybe someplace like Autumn Woods or someplace, but, yeah, or, or even, um. You know, one of the, you know, like at one of the senior, like in front of the location, try to put it out there.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Um, then moving on to. And seeing the, the campaign reporting stuff. Uh, I will check in with the, um, campaign finance reporting for candidates. I will check in with our attorney to see how that, we need to do that. Again, these whole things about the, the stuff that was in yellow, working with, um, our attorney on that language. And then, then skipping forward to page, um, fifteen, under reporting requirements. Do we have those in our code? And then to check in on, um. Where those are, where, where do we need them? Um, where, and when are they due? So if we do have them, when are they due?
Yeah, and then we're gonna add that to the table.
And that would then be added to the list of things that will happen at the due dates. Um, on page seventeen, um, I have with under B, those town owned sections of right of way. Um, that we need to check with code enforcement. So I have a note to check in with Sean Reinhardt, or Roger Reinhardt in regards to that. Um.
And also the, the placement, under placement, where are the designated electioneering zones in the town?
That was gonna go to that, so the other part, sorry, was that next part is that, um, instead of the yellow, which is instead of, um, calling to contact code enforcement. To get where the electioneering zones are and possibly get, I think we have a diagram that we can provide a diagram or a map of that. And then I have on the bottom of this, this issue of swearing in candidates or swearing in the board and getting sample oaths of office for the board.
The board and the staff, right?
Yeah, the board and the staff, I mean, what we can do is that staff is.
Whoever's gonna be doing the, whoever they. Page twenty two.
Yeah, well, I had page twenty one next. So page twenty nine, one, that, um, the question for, there was a suggestion that the town add. That, um, the town can provide a, the number of requests and, and, um, the ones that came in before or after the deadline. Um, in addition to this FAQ, so this is a frequently asked question. And then. The eight, well, I'll talk more with the town attorney with and get back to you, which is in regards to town officials. Um, campaigning while holding office. And I think that, and, and as part of this, there was a. Desire by the board to possibly add something on or, uh, uh, or, or by a business that is owned by. Or a location or rental location that's owned by the town, in addition to, um, town facilities. Other town facilities.
Business or rental, correct.
Um, and then nine. The board was really clear that they, that, that, that we will do a, a approval at one time of all candidates. And that, that there will be no formal campaigning. So that this will change the language. So I will bring language to you that says that there is no, there is no formal campaigning or signage allowed until approved. By the board at their specific meeting.
And you're gonna define what that means, correct? So that'd be clear. I know, but we're saying it now.
I have to, I, I, I think I have to talk to the attorney about how to even. Yeah, I can't, I can't tell you how clear that's going to be. So hopefully he'll say is that, the question is, can I begin campaigning for office? Before I've submitted the required doc, the mock documents and it will be, no. Um, there, uh, formal campaigning is not allowed until your candidacy has been approved by the Board of Election Supervisors. That's the answer I'm hearing. Right? And I think that says, I mean, I think that probably said, I think sometimes it might be simple answer, best answer. Um, no, it's not allowed. And this is it. And then, that's what I've got. So the ones I have so far, so looking at the last page I'm working on is page twenty two. So after I do those follow ups, those will be the follow up to this book and then a follow up with the, with the board at our next meeting. In regards to the actual certification and the application process for candidates. So these are the applications. This is what we need to certify. So these are the applications, this is what we need to certify. Those are the next topics for number three. Is there anything else that I missed?
No, I think you
I don't have anything.
And what, and what this does is I have an, um, I have an AI note taker, and so the reason why I'm kind of rewriting, I mean, re, um, saying it is so that it can do a summary, and what I'll do is I'll send you all a summary, so that we can kind of go through that summary. So that's there and that, that'll be part of these minutes. And since this is, I mean, part of these notes, um, since this is a recorded meeting, you don't have formal minutes anymore, we just put up the recordings.
Okay, dates.
Is there a, a possible date in a, between, anyway, I'm gonna need you to pull up the
I'm looking in the calendar. I was gonna say the twenty-sixth, but I think that's like MML.
That's MML time, right? Yeah, and I will be able
And then the nineteenth, would that be too close?
Actually, if that works, if, if you all can do the nineteenth, can I do the nineteenth? Am I free?
Juneteenth.
Or it doesn't have to be, you know, on a Wednesday. I guess I was trying to keep it consistent.
Do you wanna do, if we could do Tuesday or Thursday, I could do, I think I can do Tuesday or Thursday, can I? I think I can. Yeah, I'm, I, I will be, I won't be here tonight, Juneteenth, I will try to take off. I should be going on vacation with my family. Like, I told my daughter I could go someplace with her, but I'm not, I think I'm gonna make it out.
That's good, that's good. So you're looking, within two weeks?
Yeah, if we could, because that'll give us some time. I, I can turn around some of this information pretty quickly to you. Um, I might not have all the attorney's answers, that's the, but I might actually ask her to be at the meeting.
Okay.
And that way she can answer on the record and that's easier than asking her to review all this, um, and then have her do one final review.
So we could do the eighteenth, the only thing is, um,
What I got?
Just the Juneteenth event.
Okay, what time is that, sir?
Uh, just like, uh, two meetings internally, that's at ten and twelve.
Okay. I think I should be okay. I think with, can we do this at, it's three, okay? And we'll do it, we'll keep it to an hour?
Yeah.
I can't do that day. Yeah, I can't do that day.
Can you do the twentieth at all?
Mondays are good, um, Yes.
That Monday, is that Monday work? The, would that be the sixteenth? Seventeenth, does that work for you? No, right? That week is bad?
No, yeah.
What about the following week, the week of the twenty-fourth?
Much better, much better.
When do we come the, when do we go to, to, to MML that day? That Monday?
Yeah, I think that's Sunday and Monday.
I can't be here, uh, councilwoman, I mean, uh, um, for, um, I can't be in, in, here in person, but we can conduct it in Ocean City. I just, there's just not gonna be anybody at the, there's only gonna be Jessica at the town hall and she probably cannot do this online here. So if you're okay with that, I can do, what time do you guys wanna do on the twenty-four? And I do it from my hotel room there.
Same time, three P M.
Three P M?
The twenty-fourth is a Monday.
Twenty-fourth is a Monday? On that Monday? Okay, I can do that Monday. That Monday probably is better, because I don't think there's a lot going on at MML at three o'clock on Monday. I can get, I can come, go someplace and find a place to do this meeting.
Yeah, three P M.
Okay. So then I will then do, I'll, we will send an appointment for an online meeting, um, and do this on Teams again.
Okay.
And then we'll send out, we'll try to send it out a week in advance, I mean, probably at least four or five days in advance and if we're not here, we can read copies.
Oh, we can pick it up?
Yeah.
Oh, good, that is so helpful when you have it right there. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. We've got everybody. We'll get this on the calendars. Have a good day. Thanks again.
Goodbye.
Bye-bye.
All right, take care.